All right, welcome everybody. I'm John Hochheimer, the president of the National Association of Rocketry. I want to welcome you to our town hall meeting today. First, a couple of housekeeping things. If you have questions, please put your questions in the Q and A section on your screen. That'll help me be able to address the questions. And I just wanted to start out with a couple of thank yous. Certainly, a big shout out and thank you goes to Todd Schwimmen and Ed Lacroix for putting this together and spending a lot of time getting this ready for people and arranging for the speakers and troubleshooting and just putting all this together. So Ed and Todd, you know, we couldn't do this without you and you've guys have done an awesome job. I want to also thank the speakers and presenters. You all, you know, without content, the something like Narcon just wouldn't be able to happen and people are really starting to step up. Hopefully, this is spurring some ideas for people so that next year, you know, if you haven't done a presentation in the past, you can step up and you may have some good ideas of stuff to share. And as ideas come, you know, let us know and bounce some ideas off of us and we'll certainly help you put together, you know, the thought process of a good presentation. And lastly, I want to thank all of you who are participating and just helping to make virtual Narcon the success that it is. It's great that we're pulling all these people together and that we're able to reach out to a larger number of people and a bigger audience with having Narcon as a virtual event as opposed to an in-person event. Todd and I were scheming a little while ago. Keep an eye out, we may do some meetups and have some in-person kind of informal events to bring people together throughout the year. So as those mature and we get some ideas, certainly, you know, we'll advertise those. All right, let's move on. So the purpose of this is to give you all an update of the, our association. Start out with, I think our organization is still, it remains very, very strong. We're doing a number of things to make it even stronger. So if I do this correctly, awesome. All right, love to start out this with a safety heads up. And I just want to remind people, safety is everybody's responsibilities. We had some insurance claims this year and hopefully our insurance is not going to go up significantly. Unfortunately, the insurance claims that we had were pretty much something we couldn't predict. And so, you know, that's why we have insurance to cover things. There was a great presentation yesterday on hazard mitigation and risk management associated with launches. I asked everybody to try to watch that. I thought there was some really good pointers there with respect to risk and safety. But I just also want to go over the top kind of safety concerns that still concern me and I think it's something that we always need to be aware of. First one is unsafe recoveries and I just urge everybody to be very, very cognizant of launch angles and, you know, I go to as many launches as I can throughout the year. And we still see, you know, rockets that are recovering over crowds and over parking areas in places where we really shouldn't have the rockets landing, especially the larger ones. And so, you know, as you set up the range and as you set up your parking and crowd areas, you know, please be cognizant of, you know, where the rockets are going to land and as you're setting rockets on the pads, you know, think about the launch angles and factor in the wind and, you know, where things are going to go. And you can angle things off like 45 degrees so that it goes, it may go over in the same direction as the crowd. But if it's downfield from where the crowd is and can land in a safer area, that'd be much better. And also recovery failures are also, again, problematic and recovery is our largest failure mode. Next up is fires, fire safety and being prepared for fires is something, you know, one big fire is really going to be problematic for our organization. And so everything that you can do to prevent fires, I'm not launching when when the danger of a fire is great. And having the right equipment and people trained on how to use the equipment to put something out pretty quickly is also very important. Keeping rockets on the launch site, part of our safety codes require that you keep rockets on the launch site. We know sometimes the winds don't help us, but you know, as it's a requirement that, you know, we launch and the intention is that the rocket stays on our site. And some of the problems that we have associated with keeping launch sites is that rockets are raining down on neighbors land who aren't appreciative of people going onto their properties to pick up their rockets or they just don't want rockets on their property. So keep as best you can rockets on your launch site. And then lastly, we've noticed recently that some people's measurement, your measurement skills aren't being used as well as we think you need to. And maintaining safe minimum distances that are published, especially for high-power rockets is hugely important. If you set up a range and something goes south and causes a problem, you know, the insurance company is going to look at stuff like, did you follow the safety code? And the safe distance requirements are definitely a part of it. So just as a reminder, for model rockets, the minimum site dimensions are published in the safety code and put them up here just as a reminder. And for high-power rockets, the minimum distance for personnel and minimum clearing area, distance around a pad are published. And please, you know, as you set up ranges and as you're launching, adhere to these minimum and the safety, the safety code. Okay, some quick introductions. A lot of these people have been on the board for a while, but myself as president of the organization, Steve Christels, our vice president, Mark Wise, our secretary, and Kevin Johnson, our treasurer, our other board members, Jasper Barnett, just came on the board this year. Andrew Bean, I'll say something about Andrew in a second, Don Carson, Becky Green, Emily and Sears, Lynn Thomas, and Jim Wilkerson are other board members. Andrew and Emmy just joined our board in January as our new young adult board members. And they're very enthusiastic and we're looking forward to working with them and having them as part of the NAR board. Want to sort of introduce and reintroduce our NAR headquarters and staff. Myra Marquez is our headquarters manager and I'll talk a little bit more about headquarters in a second. Monica Rooker, who has been doing our social media, has stepped up and is also doing high-power certifications now. So she took over that role from Myra. Todd is our director of communications and publishing and you all know the great job that Todd does. And you know, Todd's, you know, one of the integral parts of keeping our organization running and communications out to our members. And Marie Stumpy is our headquarter manager emeritus. Marie is still doing some work for us, but it's passed on the reins to Myra. And so these four employees now represent the full-time employees of the organization. Marie is going to finish up a couple of things and we'll go off as one of our staff. So we'll be back down to three permanent employees. And then we have two contractors that do work with us, John Bolden, who helps us with our website, and Anne Heacock, who's our accountant and CPA. And Anne's been doing an awesome job helping us with our accounting practices as well as a lot of the the really sort of nitty-gritty that, of stuff that you have to do when you do things like move your headquarters from one state to another. Okay, so I guess the last time we had a town hall, I think we talked about our headquarters moving, but it really came to fruition in sort of mid to late September and throughout October. And it's been going on since then. But we moved from Iowa to Virginia, the headquarters. So our headquarters now is at Myra's physical address as well as the post office box is near her. So we do have a new mailing address. We've had to get new business licenses to operate in the state of Virginia. We're working on that. I think the last I talked to Anne, we've had the last of the paperwork done and so that should be finalized pretty quickly now. The IRS likes to keep track of us and so there were some forms and paperwork we had to do with the IRS. We switched banks and our previous bank was US Bank, which is a regional bank in the Midwest and the West. And they don't have offices on the East Coast. So we switched to a national bank chain, Chase. We had used Chase as part of the World Space Modeling Championships and they were very accommodating for that. And so we've sort of expanded that account and moved everything over and consolidated all our banking with Chase now. And they've been pretty awesome to work with. I can go down to, when I'm in Alexandria, I get down to the Chase bank near me and they take care of me. And when I'm in Colorado, I go to a local branch there and they just pick up and take care of us as well. And there's been a few little minor things that we've had to deal with. But I'd say on all, we've got our accounts now all moved over. We've got signatories and people set up to do the banking that different groups or parts of the organization need to do. And then the one thing that sort of caught us off guard was it's a requirement that if you're doing business as another name, and in this case, our organization officially with the state of Colorado, who is where we're registered to do business, is the National Association of Rocketry. And we, I don't know what that says. We had to actually add NAR as doing business as representation for the banks to take checks that were made out to NAR instead of National Association of Rocketry. We got that all taken care of. It was a couple of quick actions by Anne, our accountant. And I went down and talked to the bank and everything got taken care of. So as we moved our banking and we're very happy with how that's moving along. We had to update printed materials. We have a lot of interactions with the postal service. It's not just letters going back and forth, but things like mailing out the magazine and monthly reminders and updates for renewals for our members are going through the postal service and require different levels of paperwork and we're working through that. Actually, I think that's all been taken care of now. And then lastly, we changed the phone over. I kept the same phone number, so the old 319 phone number is still the same and rings directly to Myra now. So with that, we made a lot of of changes in the phone service. All right, let's talk a little, switch gears a little bit and talk about our membership. Some of the statistics, our total membership year over year has grown roughly 300 members. When I did this slide a couple of days ago, we were at 9,361 members total. And the breakdown of that is roughly 6,900 senior members, about 1,600 plus leader members, 644 junior members and around 134 life members. As you may recall, we're in, we'd made a bylaw change and we've changed the categories from junior leader or senior to junior, young adult and senior. We're still in the process of making those changes. It's taking, it's quite a lift on our side to change things in the database and get that set up. And we're in the process of finalizing that now. And so that'll change and so we'll be able to reflect the statistics a little bit differently the next time. But this is our membership, we're still doing fairly well. We've been sort of flat growth the last several months, but hopefully it'll change and we'll have an uptick again. All right, I love doing this graph. This is, this represents the distribution of ages for our members. And as you can see, it is a bimetal distribution and it continues to strengthen in the young adult age range, 15 to 25-year-olds. And that represents the largest cohort of members in our organization. The mean age of our members is 45, the median is 49. And that hasn't changed in the last 12 months. But what has changed significantly and I think it really shows that we're becoming a younger in age group organization is that young adult age group. High-power certifications were roughly 300, about 320 more high-power certifications total year over year. And the breakdown, 2,200 level one, 1,700 level two, 670 something, level three and about 165 junior high-power. And again, this has grown and it'll start picking up again pretty significantly as the weather gets warmer and we get more people out flying. So there is a significant number. If you factor age and who's eligible to be high-power flyers is more than half of our eligible members are high-power flyers. Some additional thoughts, and I talked about this the last time I did a town hall. But we really think that high-power certifications are a journey and not just boxes to tick off. You know, certainly, there are a lot of, there are a number of members that want to go from no certification to level three certification as quickly as possible. And you certainly can do that, but we really would urge our members to enjoy the journey and sort of make the journey an experience and gain experience as you're you're going through the process. And, you know, there is, it is a lot of fun flying level one rockets and level two rockets before you make the big leap to level three. But so anyways, you know, you don't have to do it all in a weekend. Our NAR sections are, remain strong. We have about, last, an end of December, we had 245 NAR sections. Last year, we gave out almost $16,000 in grants. And this was 58 grants that ranged up to $250 per section. Continue, want to, you know, thank Chuck Neff and everything he does as our section activities chair. We really couldn't maintain the high level of service to our NAR sections without people like Chuck, who really work hard to to keep the sections informed and work with the sections. We changed our section renewals to be on a calendar year basis. And Chuck worked really hard with our sections to get through all that and get all our sections up and running with new certifications by the end of the calendar year. And that way, as we roll into our new insurance year, which runs roughly April 1st through the end of March each year, we're not saddled with making a lot of changes all at once. And then again, a shout out to Ed Chess, who helps with the section grants program. And once you submit a section grant to us and Chuck and Ed review it, Ed gets checks out as quickly as possible and we keep the money flowing. So thanks Chuck and Ed for the great work that you all do. I like to remind our membership that the NAR is a business and we must operate organization as a business. And throughout my tenure as president, that's been a big focus that I've had is to look at our business practices and to shore up our business practices, you know, where there needed to be improved. Certainly, as we became a much larger organization over the past five to 10 years, it's necessitated, you know, taking a look at some different things. We couldn't provide you with the level of service that we provide without hiring staff and having staff to do a lot of the the day-to-day operations. And so we've grown, you know, we've added headquarter staff and done a lot on the accounting side to really shore up business practices to allow us to grow and be fiscally responsible. I also like to remind people, when you purchase in our membership, you get several benefits and services that are provided and I'll talk through those in a second. Our primary source of revenue is from dues and roughly 60% of our revenue is from dues. It's actually going down. We're bringing in more money from other sources, which is actually a good thing. But we're a member-based organization and you, our members, are providing the bulk of the resources for us to do the things that we need to do for you all. And then lastly, organizationally, we value younger members and bringing on younger members and encouraging younger members to stay active. And so the members that are 25 years old or younger, it's not exactly, we bring them in, the dues for those members is actually a little bit below what it actually costs us to service a member. So next, again, as a business, we must operate as a business. We're roughly an $800,000 per year business. We're a nonprofit with the IRS and we have tax filing requirements. We file a Form 990 every year. That's something our accountant helps us to work with. And if you've never read the 990, it's available. If you've never had to fill one out, and if you do, you would understand why having somebody that does this day in and day out, like our accountant, makes it a lot easier as well with the money we have to pay for it. I talked about that we have a mix of employees and contractors and purchase services to make our operation as efficient as possible. And lastly, right now, as of Friday, our cash on hand was about $110,000 and our net worth is about $306,000. The bulk of the difference between our cash on hand and our net worth is investments that we're making based on donations from several different members and I can talk about that in a second. All right, so when you purchase a NAR membership, again, this represents some benefits and services that we provide you as a member. We provide insurance, which is hugely important organizationally. And that's one of our largest costs of money going out. We provide you with a magazine, a member guidebook, a members forum. We have a website with member-only content, the members forum, the guidebook and access to our magazine. Early on is something in the members only part of it. You get a membership card. We allow, we support high-power certifications. We have different sections and other things like competitions, national events, Narcon, those kind of things. So these are services we provide directly to you as a member. But also as a, as your membership, there are some benefits and services that we provide that are beneficial to the hobby overall. So that's not something that directly impacts you as a member, but I would hope that indirectly, everybody sees the benefit. We do a lot with educational programs and support education in a lot of different ways. We give a number of grants and scholarships and I think that totaled about somewhere around $40,000 last year in both scholarships to college students as well as grants to teachers and organizations doing outreach kinds of activities. We support national STEM programs, ARC formerly known as, or it used to be known as TARC, but the American Rocketry Challenge, the NASA Student Launch Program and the RLS Program are some of the major programs that we support related to STEM. We maintain our safety codes, which are recognized actually throughout the world and are a major impact in terms of the insurance premiums that we have to pay. And we provide motor testing for manufacturers of rocket motors. Just some thoughts. I mentioned that we have some money in an investment account. And just as an example, Jay Apt, a couple of years ago, endowed some funds to the organization to set up a scholarship fund. And the way we've structured it is such that it's in an investment account and it's self-funded now in perpetuity. So as long as the stock market and our investment markets don't totally tank, we'll be good to go for not, much longer than the foreseeable future. And actually, over the last year or so, we've had a number of additional things that we've run into the the investment account to help out with it. And this has resulted in, we're growing more and more for educational fund. I'm trying to think. As an example, George Gassaway, who passed away this past year, actually named the NAR as a beneficiary on an insurance policy they had. And so, much to our surprise, around the September-ish timeframe, we got a call from insurance company that they wanted to fill us some paperwork and they sent us some money as a result of that. And we put that into our investment account and we're working towards setting that up as an educational fund for the future. And I mentioned this, every once in a while, people will reach out to me and say, hey, John, you know, we'd like to set something up with the NAR and, you know, provide the NAR with something, you know, what can you do for us? And this is typically where I like to steer people. And so, you know, if you have the ability and want to help us with a scholarship or help towards our scholarship fund, this is where we would put the money. And depending on the amount of the donation, we can set up a self-funded individual endowment or we can pull the money into something a little bit larger. And just to give you a sense of what we're talking in terms of, you know, how much money is needed to set these up to be self-funded in perpetuity. The rule of thumb is that you need to make roughly 4% or spend 4% of an endowment on annual basis. And that can then be can then be set up in the investment side of the house to be self funding. And so we actually do a couple of other things to ensure that we have money and cash on an annual basis. But if you figure roughly for every $1,000 that you want to give out annually, you need $25,000 in the investment account. That's the kind of level that we're talking. So, you know, if members are available or have the the capacity to donate to the NAR, we can set something up like this. And like I said, we can set up individual ones as named scholarships or or ones that we were pulling money among several. And the goal of the board is to have additional donations to 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 fund this so that eventually all of our educational scholarships and grants are funded out of this investment model as opposed to something out of our general fund. All right, let's talk, I can quickly break out the numbers. Here's the income, this is fiscal year 23. And our income, our gross income was $1.1 million. For those of you that keep track, I said we were roughly an $800,000 a year model. This year, we had an event that brought in a lot of money and a lot of money, but the same amount went back out. But we hosted the World Space Modeling Championships. And the the gross income on that was roughly $330,000 and represented a huge chunk. This is a one year kind of thing that hits our books. But like I said, and I'll show you in a second, it, the same amount went back out. But that's what changed the proportions a little bit this past year. If we take out that $330,000 one time thing, as I said, our membership dues represents about 60% of our income. So it's a big jump over the 42% that's this year. But other national events like Narcon contribute roughly 60K a year. NASA Student Launch and the American Rocketry Challenge, we bring in about $120,000 last year. We had over 60, over $67,000 in donations and support rocketry through advertising is about $42,000. All right, for costs, this year actually broke out into two different buckets, program costs and operating costs. So programs are things like the World Space Modeling Championships, the NASA Student Launch and ARC, our grants and awards, publications, and just some miscellaneous programmatic kinds of things. So that roughly was $618,000 last year. Again, if we take out the the 330K from the World Championships, that leaves us about $300,000 in programmatic costs per year. And then next, our operating costs. And this is the cost of doing business and providing the services to our membership. So headquartered operations includes everything like membership cards and things like that. Our member services, a big chunk of that is our insurance premium. We do some just our office and administrative costs. Some salaries were tied up in that. Professional fees include things like our accountant. We do pay for some travel expenses and just other miscellaneous stuff. So rough breakdown of our our budget for last fiscal year. Okay. So then if you do, if we do a real quick summary, our income last year was $1.1 million or programmatic and operating cost total $1.17 million. So our net for 2023 was actually about $39,000 in the red. We had a significant carryover from FY22, so that's not problematic. But it's just sort of a high level breakdown then of the summary of our income and our total costs. All right, a couple, a couple of quick announcements. Hopefully people are taking advantage of it, but sport rocketry comes out in digital form and it's released first into the NAR Members Only Forum. So as soon as Todd has that up and ready to to roll, he puts it into the Members Only Forum. And so you can actually read sport rocketry before you get the the magazine in hard copy. National Sport Launch West is again going to be in Alana, Colorado. And I'm looking forward to it. And NARUM will also be in Colorado and Pueblo, NARUM 65. There's some awesome things that are in the works for planning for NARUM 65. So we urge you to you know, keep up with that and please attend if at all possible. Then the last thing I wanted to talk about is RC Rocket Gliders and the FAA. And I know this has been a continuing saga and Frank Burke talked a little bit about how his models fall under the guidelines or are not a part of the current FAA regulations, but there certainly are some of our membership that fly RC Rocket Gliders that would be required to meet some of the FAA rules. We're continuing to look at ways we can make it easier and and deal with this organizationally. And I'd say that Bob Brown, who is the president of Tripoli and I met with the FAA in late last year. So I think it was like November timeframe and we had a very good conversation with the FAA. And when they asked us if we had any questions, we brought up the the whole issue of the regu, the new regulations associated with UAAs and how we don't feel that our rocket gliders fit under that. We didn't come to a solution yet, but the the person that we were talking with thought it was a very interesting argument and we're continuing to have discussions with them to try to come to some solution that doesn't require as as much of the the site requirements and the registration requirements that other UAAs require. And hopefully we can come to some solution. And if that doesn't work out, we're still committed to coming up with some solution for our membership. So that's ongoing. And the other thing I'd like to mention is, you know, I know there's a lot of people out there and, you know, our membership certainly has lots of relationships with with different organizations and and government organizations like the FAA. But it it's really kind of difficult for those organizations to understand where everything is coming from if we approach them not a unified way. And so I just ask it if you have an opportunity or want to seek an opportunity to interact with a government organization like the FAA, now please reach out to the board and to myself and let's talk it through and come up with a a good strategy to do it. So that again, it's a unified approach. And, you know, I mentioned that myself and the president of Tripoli met with the FAA and we've met with other organizations as well. And we feel that it's important for the rocketry community to be unified and organized when we meet with agencies like the FAA. And so that's why Bob and I interacted and are working together to to have this unified approach. So. With that, all right, let's wrap it up and so again, our current memberships roughly, it'll be about 9,400 by the end of the month. We have 245 sections. Our high power certification numbers continue to grow. High power is something that's very important. The magazine continues to be awesome. Thank you, Tom Beach and Todd. And if you missed the the sport rocketry as a result of the World Space Modeling Championships, I mean, it was so jam packed and so much information that we had to make it partly hard copy and partly electronic copy. So, you know, kudos again to to Tom and Todd, you know, awesome. All right, what are our priorities? I can't emphasize it enough that flight safety is our first priority. We support and celebrate all forms of commercial sport rocketry. We want to increase our organization's diversity and size and I think we're doing that well. We support and expand outreach and educational efforts. We, as best we can, offer our members full transparency and the opportunity to participate. On that note, the participate, we do have board calls on a realer basis. Every other month is an open call and a Zoom board call and then there's off months, the board gets together just as a a call amongst the board members to talk about what's important at the point, at the time. But it's those open to all of our member calls that we have, that any major decision is made and ratified. And we continue to provide national support to our local sections. With that, I think I'm going to switch gears and Joyce is here, but we did with Narcon this year have R and D presentations. I want to thank those of you who participated in the presentations. I I watched them and I I learned a lot from the four presentations and and hopefully this can grow. But a big shout out to Joyce and to Ryan Wokenberg and to Sean Guzik, who were the three judges. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Joyce.
Okay, thank you, John. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Yeah, I do want to thank the judges. It's a lot of work to read those reports. And we could use more judges in the future, especially if we have many more R and D reports, we may have to break the judging into A and B and C and D or some other combinations. So if you're interested in being a judge, please get in touch with me. So I'd like to announce our winners. We had four entries this year. We had one in B division and it was an excellent entry and deserving of first place. And this, the first place goes to Ethan Goldberg on finding the relationship between reefing length and descent rate for parachutes. So congratulations to Ethan. And then we had three entries for C division. I'll let John change the slide. Third place is Bernard Colley, who gave a nice report on nine volt batteries, the rectangular ones. And his bottom line was to use lithium batteries and not use certain brands. And you can see from his report what his recommendations are. In second place is Stephen Morris on the effects of venting altimeters on rocket airframe transition sections. And I learned there that it doesn't really matter for the peak altitude if you put your altimeter on a transition section. But the details of your boost and coast data may be different depending on where you put this altimeter. And in first place is Tom Fetter. His report was on rotational dynamic stability and had lots of interesting differential equations and math. But the outcome of it may be a future recommendation on stability and difference, the center of pressure to center of gravity margin may not be the only thing you want to consider when you think about stability and rocket performance. So I hope Tom will continue that research and give us more recommendations in the future. So each of these contestants will get a modest cash prize. Don't expect too much and we don't want to set a precedent for amounts. So I'm not going to announce them here. And I hope we can also arrange with Ed to get them a, some kind of an award like a medal later on. So I'll be in touch with each of you about your cash award and how to get it to you and also about the medals when I know more. These will be posted on the NAR. The reports will be posted on the NAR Members Only R and D archive. You can also rewatch the R and D presentations on Excel events. And Todd will also be making the slides available through, I believe, through Excel events and through the, along with the the replay. And I think we can also maybe find a place to put the slides on on the website as well. So thank you again for everyone who entered and judged and who made this possible.
All right, great. Thanks a lot, Joyce. And thanks again to the for people who gave the presentations. And Tom, I actually had to look back and broke out some of my differential equations books and I think I understood what you were talking about. So and all of you did an awesome job. So lastly, so what can you do as a NAR member? Again, fly safely and ensure others around you do the same, recruit new members and high power flyers, competitors, families. And take your turn volunteering and help with your section or with the NAR nationally and especially with the sections, you know, help, help set up ranges, help run your sections. You know, it's a much lighter lift when when a whole section goes out and helps to to set up for your local launches and and run things. Do community outreach and to community leaders, young people, parents and those you work with or those who work with young people and finally just be safe, have fun and pay it forward. All right, with that, questions? And if I do it right now, it looks like I have a couple of questions. All right, so there's a slide copy in the documents section, say, January 2023. I'm not sure if that's the current one or not, but this presentation will be posted up. It's recording, so you'll be able to to listen to it as well as all of the town hall slide sets get posted up to our website and I will send that to Todd later today. Another question, how are we doing getting nonprofit status back? Let me tweak that. We've not lost our nonprofit status, but it's being recognized at the IRS with nonprofit status. We're still working on that. But there's been some improvements. Kevin Johnson's done an awesome job reaching out and working with some of the major organizations who serve as clearinghouses for nonprofits like us in the donation world. So things I think is benevolity is one of them that a lot of employers use. And so we've been able to, I think, or there's like four major ones and we've cleared three out of the four and Kevin's actually currently working on the combined federal campaign. That's a donation service with the federal agencies. So we're getting there. We, the IRS is still a mess, but we're working on it and we're a lot closer. Well, sections, when will sections be able to claim nonprofit status? That's next on our plate. Headquarters move sort of slowed that down a little bit, but Ann and I talked the other day and this is next up on our plate to sort of work out the kinks on. So that should be something we can do pretty soon. And I can tell you, it's, it will require some paperwork on the sections. Essentially, you're going to have to get a federal ID number and that's the, there's some of these processes that we're working out to try to make it as easy as possible for people. Will sections still do individual banking or they need to migrate to an account of Chase? No, you can still keep your individual banking accounts and you won't have to to mingle with our Chase account. All right, let's see what else here. What would your thoughts be on possibly opening up or pushing to open up more volunteering opportunities for junior rocketeers or people? And that's, Ariane, hey, we'd love to get more younger people involved, certainly with the our young adult board members and sort of restructuring our our membership categories. I think we're moving towards that. And hey, reach out to me and let's talk through if you've got some ideas and other younger members have some ideas. Reach out to myself or to our young adult. Reach out to myself or to our young adult board members, you know, Emmy, Andrew, and, and also Jasper, Barnett are all, you know, willing to, to talk with you and to help, you know, get this group much more engaged. National Sport Launch East location. All right. So we don't have a, a location yet for the National Sport Launch in East. So if you have a field and, and want to volunteer to have a, a sport launch in the fall, we'd love to have it. The, the one that we had last year in Indiana was awesome, great field. I had a lot of fun and it, it was just a great experience. And, and I think a, a lot of people that showed up also had a great time there. See anymore, there was more question. I guess it got answered and popped out, but there was a question about the funding for this Narcon. It is self-funded. In fact, we actually make some money off of Narcon that helps us out with to offset other costs with other national events. So Narcon is a, a great fundraiser for us. That's all I've seen of questions. Any other questions? I can jump over to the chat and see if people. Yeah, Ken, I don't know if the FAA has concerns about our gliders with their doors. Can I answer the fully funded by fees? Yes. That's it. Any last questions? Let me jump back over to Q and A. A few years back, the FAA increased the size of the field requirements for Level One flights. Any? Ken, I'm not sure what you're referring to there. So please reach out to me, president@nar.org and, and we can we can hash that out and I, I can better understand it. But yeah, I'm just not sure what you're talking about. So I'm, I'm happy to have a conversation with you. I just don't know what it is. And David, I do understand why only 5% of the membership log onto Narcon. It's almost right. Hey, Dave, I wish I knew why people, but it, it, I can tell you, it just seems that the, the majority of our members, their primary interest in the organization is flying rockets and, and they go out and fly rockets. And hey, that's, that's fine with, you know, I wish more people would participate in, in things like Narcon, but it, it kind of is what it is. And it's not for lack of advertising. I mean, Todd and this guy spent a ton of money doing that. All right, Reggie Morrow, is there a package available for new sections to expedite 50 three status filing? Not yet. And I think you mean 501(c)(3) status. And just to clarify, so the, the NAR is a 501(c)(3) organization. And as such, we are a nonprofit. And we are recognized by the IRS, IRS as a nonprofit, except on one little part of the IRS. And then apparently they don't talk to each other. But as sections, sections are a part of the parent organization, the NAR. And what we're talking about in this 501(c)(3) status for our sections is figuring out a way to to formalize that in the eyes of the IRS. And so we've struggled with the best way to do that. And we think we've come up with a, a solution to that. And that's what I'm working with the accountant on, on how to best then roll that out. So that's where we are on that. And are we still pursuing CBO status? Yes, we're still pursuing CBO status, but our hope is that we won't have to have CBO status if the FAA recognizes us as being rockets and not UAS. So one can only hope. Any other questions? And Reggie, did I answer yours? Give me a thumbs up or something. All right. I know there's a lag, so I'm not, I'll stay on just a tad bit longer, but if there are no other questions, I want to thank you and thanks to all our members. It's again, Narcon's been awesome. Membership is very supportive and, and we appreciate that as me as president and ourselves as a board. Good, Reggie says yes. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Todd. And I guess I just stopped sharing and stopped broadcasting. We're done.